All right. Good evening, everybody. Glad to see a vibrant crowd here in City Hall. I'd like to welcome everybody to the June 16th, 2025 Anacortes City Council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Francia, could you take the role, please?
Mr. Fantini.
Here.
Mr. Young. Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougal. Ms. Hubick.
Here.
Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilmember McDougal, please.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hubick, a second by Ms. Moulton, to excuse Mr. McDougal. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Mr. Young.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Ms. Hubick, to excuse Mr. Young. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are going to our pledge. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Your Pledge of Allegiance, signify by the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, announcements and committee reports. Just the Public Works Committee was canceled earlier today, so we don't have that one. But I've got a couple of announcements. Again, I'd like to thank council and certainly the staff for a retreat that we had on Thursday. There were about 10 members of the public there. So appreciate the lively discussion, and we'll have some minutes there shortly. Washington State Fairies has switched to its summer schedule as of yesterday, so just to be advised for that, it generally changes traffic around town a little bit. Thursday, the 19th, this Thursday is the Juneteenth holiday. So in honor of Juneteenth, city offices will be closed. Solid waste pickup, including waste management, will not be picked up on Thursday, but will pick up on Friday. So Thursday and Friday gets picked up Friday. Saturday, there's the Pride Parade. That's 11:00 a.m., so from Commercial, and then it'll end up at Coslin till 3:00 p.m. Also Saturday, the Anacortes Waterfront Alliance has Experience Day from 10:00 to 2:00, and that's at Sea Fairies Memorial Park. Free activities for all ages and STEM activities on the waterfront. And I think that's all my announcements. Any announcements or committee reports I may have missed?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
Just wanted to give a quick shout out to the Parks Department for Bark at the Park. I attended that over the weekend and got an opportunity to meet Zeke, our new canine. And I know some of us were concerned if was he going to be as friendly looking as T-Bone, and I am here to say he is really cute also, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, what many of you are here for, good stuff. We've got a couple of oaths, so swearing in of two new firefighters. And with that, I'll have Chief Harris come up and introduce them.
All right, thank you, Mayor Miller, members of council. So tonight, we have two new firefighters to introduce to you, although neither are new in the true sense of the word. First, we have Matthew Rutz, a new firefighter EMT, who I'm going to call a hometown success story. He graduated from, at AHS in 2023, but even prior to that, he'd started in our volunteer academy, and we completed that later in 2022. And then we were lucky enough to pick him up full time here early in 2025. Second is Sonny Gibson, who is a lateral firefighter paramedic, originally from Dana Point, California, but he spent the last nine years working full time with the city of Salem, Oregon. So we're really excited, a lot of experience, a lot of positive attitude, a lot of positive energy. Both have been spectacular additions to our team. And with that, we could administer the oaths.
Okay, and we'll come over and do that. All right, tonight, and to pin firefighter Rutz is his mom, Janet. And firefighter Gibson's wife Pavlina wasn't able to be here tonight. She's still in the process of moving up from Salem, so he gets me. All right, thank you. Best part of the job, and thanks for the Anacortes Fire Department and for keeping us safe always. Appreciate it. All right, next up is item four, if I didn't miss anything. Public comment, opportunity for any member of the public which should address the council on anything not on our agenda tonight. And I have anybody who signs up gets to go first, and I have Courtney Orok. Topic is committee structure. And make sure the microphone's on and.
Thank you.
And state your name and city.
My name is Courtney Orok. I'm from Anacortes, Washington, on 7th Street. Just feel so anticlimactic after that. I attended the council retreat last week, and one of the topics that came up was the concept of the committee as a whole as a replacement for the current subcommittee structure to increase knowledge within council as well as more transparency with the community. I know there are pros and cons to any committee structure, but I encourage council to take a serious look at changing their current structure. I've had the opportunity to meet with various members of the community over the last few weeks, and the topic of council committees and a desire for increased transparency has come up in over 60% of those conversations. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wish to address the council that didn't sign up, perhaps? Okay, checking online attendees. No raised hands. Okay, we'll move on to item five, which is our consent agenda. Items A, B, and C, council.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda items A, B, C.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hubick, a second by Mr. Fantini to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And on to item six. Item six is a public hearing, and first public hearing on ordinance 5001, Transportation Improvement Program. So this is a discussion item with another public hearing to come. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Rayham.
Good evening, mayor and council. Before you, Andy Rayham, Public Works Director. Before you is ordinance 5001 for the annual adoption of the 2026 City of Anacortes Transportation Improvement Program. Tonight is the first of two public hearings on the program. The program is required by state law to be updated annually and approved by a public hearing and ordinance. The program sets the course for the coming six years, but again, is adjusted and updated annually. The documentation includes a summary table of when we anticipate doing the project, the cost and funding sources. Project sheets have also been included to give you an idea what the project's scope is and, you know, the bounds of the project. So I have it up on the screen here. I was just going to kind of scroll through it. The MEDE, you can read that if you'd like to catch up on RCWs. This is kind of the important part, the summary table. A few things I wanted to point out to the public and to city council, kind of going from the top there. So the first few, the first three things are your annual programs. So we do overlays. We try to fix, we fix sidewalks. We do bike and pedestrian improvements on an annual basis. So that's a pretty big chunk of your capital facilities for transportation. And then you get into the, kind of the specific projects. So Ninth Street downtown to Marina Pedestrian Link. So that's, the port is doing a big project over there, and this is the last block. So it connects to Commercial. The improvements go all the way into Commercial to try to attract people into the downtown core. Kansas Avenue, you're probably looking at the price tag going, what has happened here? So the $450,000 is the cost estimate we got to design Kansas, but it's not just the one block. So this is to look at, if we open that block, what needs to happen to the rest of that corridor to make sure it's safe? Because I would say when you open that, we're trying to get the classification before we open it, but it's a collector. It'll be a collector because everybody's going to use that for the route, and it's going to increase the amount of traffic on that road. So it's not built like a collector at this time. So we need to figure that piece out before we just open up the road and have the impact to that neighborhood. Another thing to point out on this table real quick, too. So the idea was to, this is a little more complicated than the one I did last year. Last year was a bit of a shotgun method to just make sure we had one in place. The first three years, they're funded in some parts. Sometimes, some parts you'll see that we're still looking for funding. And then if we don't have any funding identified, we just kicked it out until the last three years of the six years. So kind of keep that in mind as you see in this table, the stuff that doesn't have funding in the first three years, we don't, it's unfunded, basically.
Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters.
So I actually was a little confused by that. I mean, I understand that this is how some other jurisdictions put them together. But, for example, our annual pavement management program, we do have funding identified every year, basically. But the last three years of the six-year program, as this is structured, are always labeled as unfunded?
Yeah, that's probably a drawback for our annual programs. I think that's why we made them green, to kind of get to they are funded.
Oh, okay. So green shading on the cells mean they are funded?
Yeah, most things in these first three years, we're figuring we can either, we have the funding or we can get the funding through grants.
So, okay, so the unshaded cells that you almost have your mouse over there on a number three, are those funding sources identified? Or are they grant sources?
Those are, so we're thinking a complete streets grant for $250,000. See it over here?
Does that apply to item three, or is that just item four?
Oh, sorry, that's item four.
Okay, all right. I took it to be item four.
Oh, this is your annual program. Number three is your annual program. So I guess those green ones should be, should be green.
Okay, I didn't pick up on the green being certain funding sources. The red, the red grant titles on the right, are those purposely red, in red because they are uncertain? Because they are unfunded?
We just put the title of the grant because those are the sources of funding we thought we could get the funds from.
But we haven't locked that down yet?
No.
Okay.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Are we going to go through these one by one?
We can. I was just going to kind of open it up after I just pointed out some highlights, and then if you guys have specifics, I've got a paper copy to take your notes on. Because I'm going to come back next week, and if you want changes, this is a great time to ask for those changes so we can do that before we come back next week.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so where was it? Kansas, and then, so there's a few projects about Commercial Avenue as well as Oaks. For the, just for the audience as well. So 12th through, or 11th, sorry, through 14th. We have that slated to start construction July 7th. Then we're looking to this summer pave from there all the way to 34th Street and do the ADA ramps and rechanalization of Commercial. Looking at what the potential is of that road, there's a lot more improvements to be made. We have a 2016, I believe it is, corridor plan that's, at the time was earmarked around $60 million out of probably $80 million now. And I think we've all kind of, we haven't officially said scrap that plan, but I think for the most part, we all kind of realized, like, we probably can't afford that. So there's a few projects that we have identified for safety improvements. We look, and then there's another project kind of down the list there for more of like a peel, so that, you know, try to get some vegetation. The street poles are older than I am type of things, replace those. Just a few things that really try to, just to make it look kind of more current than it does now to attract people into town and want to stop and that type of thing. So there's quite a bit in here on that. And then Oaks Avenue is another. So we had a trade fee safety action plan that was approved by you, and it included Oaks Avenue to put a multimodal trail on Oaks Avenue. So we were packaging that with the safety improvements on Commercial from 13th through 34th to try to get a Safety Action Plan implementation grant from the federal government. So if that happens, that will be pretty awesome. So there's quite a few projects kind of around that, and I think those are the two big highlights. Most of these are from your, you know, historical CFP with those couple additions.
But maybe for the public, the whole, we haven't done this, done this before. At least in the last two years is the first time we, first time we did this, and we kind of were backwards, doing the CFP first and then building the transportation. We're trying to, we're trying to write, write the process here. So I don't know if there's anything you want to say to that.
So yeah, what you want to do by July 1st is adopt this. And then, you know, some cities do every two years, but you still adopt this every year. It's taken, it's added to Skagit County, SCAT, no, SCAT, what's it called, SCOG?
SCOG, yeah.
Skagit County.
Transportation.
So they roll it up into their thing, and that goes into the state, and then that goes into the federal one. But it's this, it's not your capital facilities plan. So that's why we need to do this now.
But this will certainly feed the capital facilities plan.
And then we're going to use this, that for year one is the live one that will be in your budget.
All right, well, again, questions, council? And obviously, we tear it apart during the, before the next meeting, but questions now that are burning?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
So I think I understand the green versus the kind of grayish-blue. But I think the confusion to me is the TIB grants that are in red. Those are, you've identified as potential sources of grant funding but have not been applied for or secured, correct?
That is correct.
So is there any way we can change the color? Because to me, like, I think I can get through this, but I'm in the weeds. And if anyone else looks at it who hasn't, isn't familiar with each individual project and what those things mean, it'd be good to clean it up a bit. Because a funding source local versus unknown, I mean, some of them seem to have similar TIB grants. So I, is there any way we can kind of clarify that on this between now and then?
Yeah, I think, I think so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and any ideas, of course, as we're trying to get this right.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
Thanks. I had just a couple of questions. So thank you for the kind of clarifying information on Kansas. Do we need to, because I know on here it says West Third Street to West Second Street. Do we need to clarify any of that language in here? Like, just to make sure that we don't, just, not that, I mean, I absolutely trust that we won't do that. I just, is it important to put that on this document?
The only thing that I hesitate to do that is the $2.5 million, that is just for that block. So the design is including the corridor. That's why it's, the amount it is.
So the $450,000 is like, let's just say the full design from Oaks all the way up to where it gets nice around West 8th, is that right?
It's not full design. It's full design for the block that we want to build.
Okay.
But the rest of it is going to be a preliminary design.
Okay, because one of my, one of my concerns is that we'll do a couple blocks, and then there'll be a few blocks in the middle that don't have any of that nice, safe, speed stuff or anything. And then even though there'll be certain areas that will be safe, there'll be a huge spot in the middle that won't be. So, so the design, are you saying that 450 for design? How, can you tell me a little bit more about that? Like, how?
So it'll, it'll be to look at the entire corridor to figure out what we need for improvements there to make it a collector. So we have standards for a collector, and it includes sidewalks, curb and gutter, all that stuff. The, we're needing to do something in the interim to open up that first, that last block. And so what that is, is going to be preliminary design. We plan to make that part of the project. Because right now, we don't believe it's totally safe to have it be a collector.
Yeah, okay. And then the other question that I had is when we're looking at the Oaks Avenue, number eight on here, Anna Copper Road to G Street, those improvements. So are we talking about basically, and again, I'm sorry, I don't know a lot of the, I'm definitely, I have not worked in public works before, so a lot of lingo is kind of lost for me. But the separated two-way multi-use pathway pedestrian crossing, is that basically like making it safer in that area for folks to like walk and bike? Is that what that essentially is?
That's exactly what it's for. Yeah, it's safe for cars right now.
Yeah, very safe for cars, not so much for, yeah. Okay, great, thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. One of my questions relates to Mr. Fantini's question because we did Kansas from West Fourth to West Third in sort of, I would call it a slapdash manner. And so are we going to build, just to clarify, between Third and Second up to the standards we would like to see? Even if it is just a little segment?
Yes.
Okay. And then ultimately, we would like to extend that the whole way?
Yeah.
Okay. But we're not, we won't probably be able to fix Third to Fourth at the same time?
We'll see. I mean, I'm hoping to do improvements to the entire thing. I mean, even if it's like gravel shoulders and getting the road in the correct alignment? Because right now, it goes like this. Those type of things, and the intersections are clearly intersections instead of being off angles and just, yeah, it needs, it needs some work.
Okay, great. And then my other question is about number three, and especially on Q Avenue from 7th to 11th Street and 4th to 7th, paved pathway to transit bus stop. So what does that look like? Is that a wider sidewalk than we, yeah, let's go there?
It just shows more. I'll have to get you more information for next week on what those exact locations are.
Okay, because I think that would be great, but I'm picturing like.
It just says.
I'm picturing the bulb outs, and I'm picturing what it looks like now from 4th to 7th on Q. And I would just be really curious to see what the expectations are for that.
It looks like marked by planes with arrows, is what I have here.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, that 4th to 7th, I'm, okay. I'll just have to go walk it and see what that's going to look like. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Did you want more information on that then, or you just want to go look at yourself and?
I'll go look at it, and then I'll send you an email if I need more. Thank you.
But I guess just to clarify, if it doesn't say bulb outs, then that's not going to be.
It does not say. It would say.
And I'm looking at the dollar amount, so, but, you know. Probably not.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters, and then Mr. Fantini.
If you scroll back up to your overview table, I'm, I, I would like to see some improvements to the presentation here. The funded versus unfunded headings are confusing to me because for some rows in the table, all the columns are funded. I kind of like the green shading for the funded cells. I think that can make some sense. The unfunded cells, if we adopt a different shading color, I think, also makes sense with a legend. The, the grant program names kind of just float out there, and at least in this overview table, it's sometimes a little unclear to me how those are working. So for instance, item number six seems to identify two $500,000 grants. And then it names those grants on the right. That makes sense to me. But then item number five identifies a grant but doesn't have an amount associated with that grant. And item number five has $2.5 million in the green funded shading. And I'm not, I'm not aware of funding that's already been allocated or approved for that project in that amount. And I think that that, that issue probably recurs elsewhere in the table as well. So maybe another scrub of the table once that legend has been articulated would be helpful. With respect to our annual pavement management program, we've got that $1.8 million a year, and we certainly have had some discussion about how $1.8 million from the year that we adopted the resolution isn't worth $1.8 million anymore. But assume for the moment that we're spending $1.8 million. I thought that we had determined that for this year, because we were going to be paving South Commercial Avenue, that we weren't going to be spending that $1.8 on the pavement management program because we're going to reallocate those funds. But is that, is that where that project appears here under item two?
We plan to have it done this year. South Commercial, we plan to have it done this year.
Right, yeah.
This, so the first.
So it just wouldn't show here because 2025 isn't shown?
It's in the past, in this document.
All right, so then the total amount for that is three plus million dollars, right? I mean, we don't have a bid yet, but somewhere in that neighborhood. So I thought we were going to not spend that amount of money, the $1.8, next year to help cover, make up. Was that not our plan?
I didn't recall that part. I, I thought we were using this year. We raided the pavement program, the ADA program, the sidewalk program. And I think, I don't remember what, there are some others, some money from WashDOT.
Assumably, we had to put a great deal of REIT into it. Is that, is that true?
I think that's planned, yeah.
I'm seeing a head nod from our finance director.
That's good.
Okay. I, I wonder if you could bring forward a breakdown of that, simply because depending on how much REIT or other funding sources that we put into it, we might want to scale back pavement for the following year to let other needs catch up with some of that REIT. But if we had, if we had that in front of us, we could, you know, make that decision. And then also on Kansas, we did have quite a bit of discussion about this in Public Works Committee over the last couple of years, really. And I wonder, should that, should that item not be called out as more than just West Third to West Second then? Because I thought that we were, we were quite adamant as a council that we, you know, we want to do, as you describe, more of a treatment to that whole section. So shouldn't we, shouldn't we? So shouldn't we, shouldn't we list that whole section from, I don't know, West Fifth to Second? With a specific call out for the unpaved section?
As long as we do that part for the construction, I just wanted, I didn't want the public to think that we're doing the whole corridor and then we're just doing one block and.
No, I mean, it seems like, you know, you can do multiple, in this organization, you can do multiple rows per project?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I could add, I could, I could try to add something to item five to make it clear that the designs for.
Well, so I, I, I thought that, I mean, the whole, the whole concept here is we're opening up a corridor that doesn't, hadn't previously been opened and that will substantially improve circulation. But it may also lead to sort of a racetrack effect. And so to mitigate that, we were going to do some additional treatment to those roads. But it's more than just that one block from West Third to West Second. So for me, I would think we would want to include that in the tip because, we're pretty committed, I think, to doing that, uh, lest we create maybe a safety problem. Since it's such a straight shot down to Oaks Avenue.
Yeah, I think once, once we have a little more information about the preliminary design, we might think twice about opening that block. But I don't know that for sure.
Oh, is that your?
I'm just guessing that we might have some pretty substantial safety concerns there that we're going to need to do something least temporary to.
Okay. Well, so even if that's true, though, I mean, still, we want that block open for circulation. But maybe we want to step that back until we have improved the safety of the roadway. So I guess all I'm advocating is for this project to reflect that entire corridor rather than just that one block.
I don't remember. Did you, are you reading the one page for it?
Yeah, the one pager doesn't have very much.
Doesn't say much about.
Description. That's pretty short. Yeah, we can add to that.
Was there anything else? Mr. Fantini was next.
Thank you for that.
And then Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
I had just one other question about a separate one. When we're looking at project number ten, the Twenty Second Street Safe Route to School improvements, it talks about that there's a long, straight, un, un, unobstructed street abutting Anacortes Middle School. I, I think we all know right where that is. Are we suggesting that we're going to put bike lanes in there? And I guess when I, when I'm kind of looking at that, I'm, I'm realizing how narrow it is. And I'm thinking of when like, there's a lot of T-ball games going on there and there's a lot of, that tends to be a street that like, a lot of folks park on all the time. So when they do that, are they looking to kind of like build closer in or bring it more into the street? Because I just, I was having trouble figuring out how that is going to look or work.
So this was, this is one of the projects that was requested by the Anacortes School District to do for safety for kids getting to and from school. I'm not sure if you'll be able to have parking and sidewalks and bike lanes. I, I don't know.
Okay. But, so that's kind of what the design thing would, or the design part would help us figure out is what we can do there?
Yeah. And keep in mind too, so we've gone for the Safe Routes to School Grants two times since I've been here and been not successful on this project. So, but you need to have it in your tip to make sure that they can point to the tip and say, hey, the city in the grant process, that gives you a lot of, of points.
Okay. Thanks.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
Thank you. So it's June and I'm pulling up the capital facilities plan. So I, I would like to kind of step back a minute and say, we have to have the transportation improvement plan, which we're working on currently. This is the subject of tonight. But then we also have the capital facilities plan. So I pulled that up looking at, for example, the Kansas Avenue Street Build. And I, I feel like every time we go through the capital facilities plan update and debate of what we want to include and the level of detail, I do appreciate the additional detail that you find in the capital facilities plan where it says project title, location, description, justification. And this is good, but I think that that's a good example. The, the capital facilities plan kind of breaks it down in a, so that the average citizen is able to understand what is going on. So I think it would be beneficial to kind of take a look back at the capital facilities plan, knowing that it's not the same as the transportation improvement plan. But making it a little bit more seamless so that the information is kind of presented in a similar way, since we're essentially talking about the same project in just two different documents, correct? Am I on the right page with this? Am I understanding?
Sure. And we will produce those for the capital facilities plan.
Right. But if we're telling a constituent that we also have this, transportation improvement plan and it's the same project, I think it would be beneficial for us to have, I mean, that one kind of breaks down the funding sources. Granted, I do appreciate the notes on the transportation improvement plan at the bottom that really talks about the different potential grant, um, sources. I just would like to see it maybe laid out in a more similar format between those two different documents because we're essentially talking about the same thing. So to make sure that unless you have a reason, all of that information is provided in, in both of those documents.
We can make them identical.
Even better.
If that's something that people want for the project sheets.
Yeah. I think the suggestion is to take the best parts of the capital facilities plan and steal that information because we don't have to reinvent the wheel. Yeah.
Copy and paste.
Easy enough. I can do that. Can we do that for next year's though, instead of trying to do it?
No, that's okay. I, I just, I, I like, I think that the work that you're doing now is good, but there's a few other details that we're seeing in the capital facilities plan from last year that I think would be beneficial. I mean, even, and I know the, the table of the funding sources and the projected costs are kind of boring and, and you don't really need all of that because it's usually simple. But it is nice to kind of have, because the local versus the unknown, I guess, we don't, I don't know if we've really used that unknown term. It's more, is it going to be grants or? Yeah, I, I just kind of streamline it would be beneficial.
Well, I've seen in the CFP where we claim grants we don't have yet too.
Oh, totally. And, and I think that that's, that's something that we've talked about is, you know, we, we tried to do a ranking system, you know, we'd like to have it if we could find free money, but we, it's lower on a priority if we're using our own general fund money. And if we want to work that into, I just, it's, I just like to see it all kind of harmonize a bit better and pull on that information.
I think it'd be great, but could we do it next year for this?
Sure.
Okay, because I don't have the sheets ready for the CFP. Thank you. Next year, though.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Uh, I think, uh, Ms. Cleveland McGrath makes a good point and I'm also okay with waiting till next year. But having a single version of the truth on what each of these projects is would be helpful. On the other hand, I have a vague recollection of recent-ish Futurewise versus Spokane case that determined that the transportation projects need not be replicated in the capital facilities plan.
Need not to be replicated?
Right. Transportation projects are going to be in the transportation element and then in the transportation improvement program. And maybe we don't have to also have them in the capital facilities plan.
The only thing is that's.
Has its pros and cons.
That's the only thing that we, so when you authorize this, it doesn't allow us to spend. But when you authorize the CFP, it does allow, it gives us direction to spend. If that makes sense. Like, this is like, this is a planning document, basically. The CFP is for real, like, go spend this money.
Yeah, because that has to be adopted along with a budget by RCW, so.
But I don't know about that case law. When we will, we can talk about that.
I'll, I'll look for the case and maybe we can talk about it because it might facilitate simplification a little bit. On, uh, Project Twelve, Fidago Bay Road Reconstruction, we got a million dollar local monies. Is that, it's shaded green. Is that something we actually have?
So the tribe, wow, sorry about that. The tribe has that money. They're, they're planning to have that money. They don't have it yet. They're having the same kind of federal whiplash on funding.
That would be the Samishes' money.
Did I say?
The one million?
Yeah.
Okay. Maybe we could call that out differently then, rather than local. Because I anticipated local was city, city funds, the various spots of, of non-grant city funding. And then similarly with, uh, Guimans Channel Trail Phases Two, Three, Four, we've got three hundred and some thousand local money. Do we know what that funding source is?
Uh, I don't, I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay. Because it's set for twenty twenty-seven and, I mean, if it's local money and planned for expenditure in twenty twenty-seven, unless we've already received it in some, and tagged it in some way, it seems like that's just a a premonition that we might spend it in, in two years' time?
A suggestion, yes, that we'd sent, we'd spend it then.
Okay. It just, i- is unclear to me, uh, from these materials, what that, what that really means. Where the funding source is coming from and what that three hundred and thirty would be spent on.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
So going back, the Guimans Channel Trail, we were looking for grant funding for an EIS document, environmental impact study. Remind me, did we get that? This, I'm looking back at my notes from like twenty twenty-three. Did, we were hoping to get that? Did that ever come through?
We've never gotten it.
Okay. I wonder if that's where that.
I wanted to say that, but I was not sure, so I wasn't going to say.
Except the number doesn't line up, yeah.
And it's twenty twenty-seven.
Well, we were, we were, in twenty twenty-three, when we were budgeting for twenty twenty-four, I think we were hoping we would, it would come through in twenty-four, twenty-five. So we could then spend it. It was, yeah. That's what I remember kind of would line up.
It is hard to get grants for that project, just so you guys know.
Again, I think the, the important exercise here is to make, try to get this a little bit clearer. I think that's what we're hearing from council to try to have it make more sense. And we'll work on that. Uh, any, any other questions? Uh, this is a public hearing and any member of the public wish to, uh, chime in on this one? Okay. Uh, well, again, there's a lot of, uh, we want to make sure to get this as best we can and so we can get our, get our order right. And so please take a look, take a look at this offline and if you've got any questions, reach out to Mr. Rayum and we'll try to work on it. All right, uh, we are on to item seven, Other Business. Seven A is Facilities Condition Assessment Progress Update. This is a discussion item and open for public comment. And, uh, Mr. Rayum has not moved from the podium and he will be introducing this. Mr. Rayum, when you're ready.
Okay. This is, uh, agenda item for informational purposes. As with the, with the master planning for transportation, water, sewer, storm, Public Works has developed information about the city facilities. The assessment included every facility that we have in our system. The information from this effort will be used to inform the capital facilities plan. As you will see, we have, uh, some deferred maintenance. He'll get into that a little bit. Just kind of typical when you do a full, uh, assessment of your facilities. Tonight, we have Mark Hood with McKinstry Industries to provide his presentation and I'll be here to answer questions with him.
Welcome back. Yeah, a lot of familiar faces here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So, uh, we performed, uh, we're about eighty percent, ninety percent complete on this project. And this is just a high-level overview of where we've been. We put a couple of renderings of your new city council here that we're hoping, uh, at some point. Now, so where have we been? We performed a facilities condition assessment on fifty-two facilities, about two hundred and eighty thousand square feet. We're also developing a preventive maintenance, uh, plan that will meet clean buildings, um, criteria. And, uh, further, so that that is documented, we're going to have all that information into their CMMS system, which is Cartograph. And this is just high-level, kind of, um, talking about some of the work that we've done the past five years. This is only municipalities. Uh, we do higher ed, K through twelve. Yeah, a lot of other types of things that we do. So just taking it through the stages, these are your pictures. A couple of deficiencies, just to get a flavor. So when we get to the capital dollars, uh, we didn't just make it up. We actually went to every single building, looked in every room, walked every roof, walked every perimeter, looked at every sidewalk, et cetera. So we go out, um, we took thousands of pictures. That's kind of the top left, there is a workbook that has about thirty columns for each asset so that you can sort and slice and dice by building, by type of equipment. And we so far have about fourteen hundred line items that we have entered by hand. And you have to make sense of that. So we do that by scoring criteria. So asset condition of a one through five, uh, think of it as a golf score. High score is bad, low score is good. I had to inform you, you don't have a lot of ones and twos. You do have a few. But we also have other criteria. Decarbonization is a big discussion in the Pacific Northwest. So we've also included fuel source and I think we ended up with constituent impact. So what are some of the spaces that the public sees? So that kind of pushes out some of the water treatment, you know, facilities, et cetera. And then on the bottom right here is we take all of those fourteen hundred assets by estimated replacement year and by building, by year, it's broken out. So this is all about data. This is about building a foundation for the city of Anacortes. If there's a decision's going to be made, you're going to be able to back it up with facts because we actually have all the facts here. So this, you can't read it all, but they will have the workbook. These are all your buildings, all of those costs by year for thirty years. And just to take a fun little snapshot, for this particular project, I just truncated, just at random, I, I pulled a bunch of, um, sites together, uh, years one through five. And for all of the sites, not just your municipality buildings, about seventeen million dollars in deferred capital costs. I think for the municipal buildings, about four point eight million. On the water side, water treatments, ten point something. Anyway, it, it all rolls up. You go out twenty years, that's what, twenty, twenty-one million dollars in deferred maintenance, all based on actual visualization of the equipment. One thing to highlight on this workbook, uh, the goal of this workbook, and I think what makes McKinstry unique, I've already sold you on the project, so I'm not, I'm not upselling here. But what's great about this is it's, it's an Excel document and it's easily updatable. So I'll be working with the team to make sure if they change out a water heater or they add an air handler or they rebuild a roof, you update it in here and it updates in your thirty-year CapEx plan. So our goal is for you guys to never have to do another FCA again until you build a new building. I know, I'm ripping through this. So, um, so site visits are done, most of the data entry is done. Now, uh, majority of your buildings are going to get a nice two-page report. Hopefully it'll match your, uh, your template. We'll see how that works, uh, next year's plan, right? So the larger buildings will have just a snapshot, high level. What are the high-dollar things that have low scores you guys should focus on? Age of the building. Then we do a five-year, uh, graph. The top part of the graph there is year by year and then the bottom accounts for inflation. Inflation's real and the more you, you defer and defer, it's going to cost you more. So you can either be at, on year five, whatever, you know, ten, ten thousand dollars. You can be at three hundred and twenty, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, uh, by deferring and just letting that inflation keep up. And then on the right by the scope items, um, you're going to have a little write-up and then we're going to make sure you, uh, understand what some of the deferred, uh, capital plan, deferred maintenance items are for each building. So to, uh, check two boxes, uh, one is the clean buildings performance that's, um, coming for a couple of your buildings. And to make your, uh, facilities team best in class, we're, uh, providing a preventive maintenance plan. So we, we're going to identify out of that fourteen hundred assets, who's going to maintain what, when? What's the trade, you know, if it's a plumber or an electrician or HVAC tech? Then about how much time it should take. So that helps inform to extend the life of the equipment. You know, about how much time you should have. So it helps right-size the team. And when they come up before you and say, we need a bigger team, you're going to know exactly why. This is all based on data. And then on the bottom right, you're going to have what that ask, actual. And then on the bottom right, you're going to have what that ask, actual tasking is. So we've spent, I don't know, three to four hours in multiple meetings, actually going line by line on all of the assets that can be maintained, how much time it's going to take to do it, what, what's the tasking we're going to do. So this is very well thought through, it's not just something that's going to be ram-rotted. And all that is going to roll into your CMMS, which is Cartograph, and this is how you run an efficient operation, it's based on data, it's based on PMs being, getting completed, it's based on tracking repairs. So you can make data, data-driven decisions, and not, you know, just trying to notepads and things like that, which, by the way, they're doing a great job with the resources they have, with this resource, hopefully it'll be even better to be able to track. So kind of the last part of this whole process that we're doing is we're going to get that into a template that's for Cartograph, and every CMMS has their own way that that data is going to get put in, so we're going to make sure that's put in, so they can track all of the equipment. The last thing I was going to share, which this is not part of my specific scope, but is part of the project, is some of the clean buildings work that is going to be done as part of this project. You only have two buildings, over 20,000 square feet, less than 50, I believe, but you have two funding sources to pay for that totaling a total of $40,000. So there's one for the Association of Washington Cities, they have a Phase Two that's rolling out, that we'll work with the team, they actually have to submit it, but we'll get everything teed up for you guys. And then Commerce Tier Two Building Early Adopter Incentive Program, so another about $20,000, so $40,000, you get to double-dip on that, because it's two different programs. Trying to rip through here, did I meet my 10 minutes or 15 minutes, so I can leave some questions? Yeah, a lot going on, it's been a great project, we're probably just a couple of weeks out, I'm really getting at some substantial reports, but yeah, questions?
No, this, this is great, and I'll certainly let council and the public, if they've got any questions, but ties in really well with what Mr. Rayum has implemented since he's been here with, I can't remember what the program is called, but where you've got to enter in your work, what you're actually, what you're actually doing into Cartograph, so tying that into the preventative maintenance program. And I'm sure, I'm sure council, and maybe the public saw that big number that, that scared me when you briefed all of the directors, you know, the initial 17 million of deferred maintenance. It's not, it's not that we've been defer, because again, our, Mr. Ludeman's team and the, and the facilities folks do a fantastic job, but because we've never done this before, you're going to be seeing all of the things that hit you right up front. So with that, I'll, I'll turn, well, any member of the public wish to chime in on this one, questions? Obviously, it's not, the spreadsheet's not final yet, but we'll be having that, putting that out. Council.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I, I saw some pretty big numbers flash across the screen there, but also some of those were utility facilities, right?
Ten, over 10 million.
Yeah.
Because that, that's, you know, that's the whole scope, so, and I know you guys don't, but that's part of the scope, so.
Yeah, so once we get the, the full document and can look, look through it, I think we'll have a better, better sense of everything.
We actually broke it out kind of by team, so water, water treatment, municipals, yeah, so it, it cleans it up a little bit, so you'll be able to just focus on stuff you guys are looking at. The great news with that workbook, I mean, it's just $17 million, you just don't have it. Well, you can push things out, you can say, you know what, we're just, these are assets, we just can't, so we're going to push out five years, and we'll, you know, so you can right-size that, and prioritize the assets you want to focus on, so.
And that'll be an interesting exercise, some.
Oh, yeah.
Some things you can push out, some things they will break, if you keep pushing them out, right? So.
Yeah, life safety.
Looking forward to digging in.
Yep, life safety items, things that if it fails, that the building is shut down, and that's not acceptable, focus on those first. And with the workbook, that's very easy to do, I'll be working with the team, so you know how to do that.
Any other questions? I know, we're all, all excited to dig into the spreadsheet and move around, so.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I, I definitely like the approach that McKinstry has described here, but Excel files sometimes break, are you on, are you on call in case that happens?
Yeah, the, the, the one we work with has a lot going on, and we know how to fix it. The one that we give you gets, I don't, not in a bad way, but we, we strip out the, the stuff you can really mess up, and, and we work with the team, and we are on call, yeah, we absolutely want to help you, we're a long-term partner.
Okay, so you haven't, in your experience, had jurisdictions just.
Not.
Abandon their Excel files because they break and.
Well, it's, it's just because it just, they don't, they don't ever have enough money, and it's like, man, we tried, you know, and that's really what it is, and there's some that are plugged in, I can give you many examples, where they took this information, they cleaned up their CMMS, they took 70% like hair-on-fire problem calls all the time, documented, and we flipped it to 80% PM and 20% preventive maintenance, true preventive maintenance, and it's, it's really cool to be part of, and cool to see it actually works, I've seen it, yeah.
It does seem like there will be some substantial staff time involved in the care and feeding of the Excel file, but it will, I think, help us feel assured that we've got this data, and we have things under control.
Yep.
All right, all right, well, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks.
Still more work to do there. All right, we'll move on to item 7B, this is an update on the Supreme Court's decision regarding indigent defense caseload standards, it's a discussion item only, and Ms. Hsu has this. Whenever you're ready, Ms. Hsu.
Mayor, council members, the audience, tonight I'm here to present on the new indigent defense caseload standards. The order was filed with the Washington State Supreme Court on June 8th, and I saw it last Monday night at the, the council meeting, so I wanted to make sure that that got in front of you as, as quickly as possible, because if you remember, last week, we transitioned to having contracted public defender, and that was the first day of the contract. So just to give a little bit of background, in 2023, the Washington State Bar Association reviewed the RAN study, which looks at caseloads for public defenders, and then the following year in 2024, they revised what the, the standards were for the indigent defense. The Washington State Supreme Court said, we need to take a, some time to review this, and they had two separate public hearings, one in September of '24, and another in November 2024. The city of Anacortes did submit public comment during those hearings, and then June 9th, the, the final order was, was issued. So the kind of down and dirty, the new caseload standards is that effective January 1, 2026, the caseload standard for misdemeanors, which is what the Anacortes Municipal Court handles, reduces from 400 cases to 120 cases. The good news is that, and they waited to the second paragraph to tell you this in the actual order when you're reading it, but the, the good news is that that is phased over a 10-year period. It also said that you do not have to have a weighted system, and currently, we do not have a weighted system for how we're counting our cases, it's encouraged, but it is not a requirement. And it would make more sense if we were looking at felonies, which we do not, because they're more complex, and so maybe one case might be more complex than, than another, but because we're only dealing with misdemeanors, I will also encourage that we, that we not move to a case ranking system or weighting system. So the implementation timeframe, so the caseload limit goes into effect on January 1, 2026, but again, that is phased in. And so that reduction is 28 cases per year, so just to do a little math, basically what it is, is the annual reduction has to be at least 10% of the difference between the current standard, 400, and the new standard, 120. And so 10% a year reduction gets us to, the, the projection is that you need to have a 28-case reduction, 28 cases reduction each year, and we have to be fully in compliance by 2020, 36. They will be meeting with us and doing a review, or I don't know if they'll be meeting with us, but there will be a review in 2029 to see how we're working towards that implementation. I thought that, you know, just looking back, that it'd be important to look at our Anacortes caseload history. So in 2023, we had 324 cases that our public defender handled, and then 93 that were handled by conflict or overflow attorneys. The number that we're looking at is risk per attorney, so the, the caseload of 120 is per attorney. In 2024, that reduced to 277 that the public defender handled, with 151 going to, to conflict or overflow. This historical information will be important to us as we move forward, because with our contract with Periscope Legal, it's based on changes, looking backwards on what the, the caseload was. And they're concerned with, anything that would be a reopen, or would be 15% more or less in the, the caseload.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Multy.
Thank you. Ms. Hsu, is that, are the 93 on the right, those are the overflow from, so 324 are public defender, and the 93 were not public defender, those were the overflow?
They were, they were with other contracted public defenders that the city has contracts with.
Okay. Thank you.
So just, I thought it'd be important just to think about what the, the local government impact is. So, and this information was compiled by the Association of Washington Cities, but cities handle 65% of misdemeanors in the state of Washington, in 54% of all cases, yet we only get about 10% of funding through the, the state. And so, and looking at that, they have estimated that that's around $40 million a year that's spent by cities on defense services. So, you know, again, the thing that I continue to talk with the Association of Washington Cities about is that this creates both a funding and a capacity challenge for us. One, the, the capacity is there aren't enough public defenders in the pipeline to be able to, to meet these caseload standards, so I appreciate that we have some additional time. And then sometimes smaller and more rural areas have a difficult time of being able to, to recruit and retain these, these public defenders in their communities. So just to, in summary, the lower caseload caps were adopted, but we do have some flexibility in how that's implemented, we have 10 years to put it together, but I, you know, continue to be concerned about the, the budget implications for this. Some other things that were not implemented, that were initially required, or were recommended by the Washington State Bar Association, was an addition of specific staff within the public defender's office for investigators, for legal assistance and, and different things. So this is kind of pared down. So we are in the process of beginning that, that phased planning down, and we'll continue to look for state funding, and, and I imagine that we'll have this as a legislative priority in, in future years, just in terms of thinking about funding opportunities and support through the, the cities other than through grant funding. And just a final thing, Periscope Legal, the Ella Salvatore is the city of Anacortes' public defender, this is her email address and phone number, she is in the process of seeing clients already, and they are getting an office up and running at the Anacortes Marina facility, so appointments are required, just wanted to, to put that out there, we have updated the information on our city website to reflect this. So this is just informational, did want to report back as soon as it was, became available, but I'll do my best to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, questions for Ms. Hsu? Okay, don't go anywhere, next up is ordinance 5002, this is item 7C, amending municipal code, Chapter 2.18 regarding indigent defense services, it's a discussion item with possible action, but it's an ordinance, Ms. Hsu.
Thank you. So when we initially brought our public defender in-house back in 2013, that was when the, the last time that the Washington State Bar Association and the Supreme Court had reduced the caseload standards. At that time, I had tasked our public defender with helping us to write municipal code through the creation of an ordinance about the establishment of an in-house public defense office. Since we have made the, the transition to utilizing a, an outside attorney to, to provide those services, we thought that it would be helpful to, to go back and to update the, the ordinance and the municipal code as it relates. So this is just in line with our indigent defense service requirements, and I tried to just put a summary of what the, the change is, and this looks like a lot more than what we're really trying to do, but the intent is to ensure that by making reference to the Washington State Supreme Court requirements, that we're taking away the, the items that are very, very specific to the current status, as what is the Washington State Supreme Court or the Washington State Bar Association is providing, and just simplify the municipal code so that it says, we're going to follow the requirements that are established by the Washington State Supreme Court in providing indigent defense services as is required by law. That is what we're trying to do here in, in summary. It's not intended to, to mean that we're moving away from any of the, the requirements, we're just trying to ensure that 10 years from now, that we'll have municipal code that is likely more current than something that is very specific that says we're going to have an office, and it's going to be located here, and it's going to be staffed by these, these people. Be happy to, to answer the questions that, that you have about that.
All right, questions for Ms. Hsu? Any members of the public want to weigh in on this one? All right, well, it is an ordinance, we'll plan on bringing it back, if you have any questions, in the meantime, please reach out to Ms. Hsu.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I think it would be just slightly better if we added a recital that indicated that the sections we're deleting are covered in the Supreme Court's guidance or the ethics rules, simply because there, there are sections we're deleting that contain good content, they're just not really necessary to, to have in the chapter.
I'd be happy to, to do that, and maybe just taking a, the pulse about how you feel with that change being included, having this added to the consent agenda, because typically we don't have ordinances put on the consent agenda.
Any objection, counsel? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we'll see it next week, and next up is item 7D, this is a contract award, North Line Repair Project, it's a discussion item and possible action, and Mr. Rayum is going to present. Mr. Rayum, whenever you are ready.
Okay, before we use a contract with Strider Construction in the amount of $1,835,340 to construct the North Line Repair Project at the water treatment plant. In 2023, the 36-inch, three-foot diameter, North Transmission Line, so this is the, not the raw water line, this is the treated water coming back at the city. In 2023, the, it broke, and we did a temporary repair on the inside, it was like a patch on the inside of the pipe, that was temporary, but it's, it's held, it's still in good shape. The treatment plant is very excited about getting that patch replaced with a permanent fix, though, 36-inch line, I don't know what that looks like if it broke, but it would be, might be able to see it from here. So in, in 2024, council amended this capital facilities plan, we had in the plan just about the meters, and then so we added this pipe repair, repair as well to that project and designed them together, and Strider was the one and only bid that we received, there were about $400,000 over the engineer's estimate, but they're the only bid we received, so. In the image here, really zoomed in, but it, but that's where the water plant is, and we're over here, but if you zoom in, so there's a big. But if you zoom in, so there's a big thirty-six inch pipe that comes out of the, the facility here. There's two lines that it breaks. There's a north and a south line. That's why it's the North Line Replacement. This meter, there's a meter in this vault as well as this vault. And so the project is to move this vault. There's a sinkhole. I don't know if you guys are familiar with the sinkhole. Sinkhole's right about there. And so we believe that the vault moved with the sinkhole, that which in turn busted the thirty-six inch pipe. So to fix that for future problems, we are moving that vault over here, further away. And then that's where we will install the new meter on the North Line, and the North Line Pipe Replacement will be basically this, this area right here.
All right, there you go. Questions, counsel? Mr. Walters?
Did we ever learn anything more about why the sinkhole occurred? Sometimes it's water leaking.
Yeah, so it was during a flooding event, and so apparently, and I didn't know this, but in the Skagit Valley specifically, you will have sinkholes, you'll have the ground. They actually, during high-water events in the Skagit, they patrol the entire property, and there, we have things we have marked that we take, we keep track of because it's just, the ground's unstable in a river valley.
So you think it was a high river water level that was the proximate cause of the sinkhole?
Yeah.
Okay. Not a pre-existing leak in the pipe?
It's never moved since. So I did that, and then we, we've been surveying it, well, not constantly, but pretty regularly, I think quarterly, for years, and it's not sinking.
Okay.
Other questions?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I move we authorize you to sign the contract as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion by Mr. Walters and a second by Ms. Hubick to approve the contract as presented. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, vote please.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Ms. Hubick?
Yes.
Mr. Fantini?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, Mr. Rayum, don't go anywhere. Last item, item seven, seven E is termination of Lake Comer Agreement with R and R Summit Northwest LLC. This is a discussion item with possible action. Mr. Rayum?
Thanks, sir. So R and R is Rock Ridge. Strandberg Construction contacted us wishing to basically dissolve a Lake Comer Agreement he has on some parcels that are still for sale. They're not connected to the water sewers, well, anything. There's no building there yet. He did that request basically because it's easier to sell the parcels without the Lake Comer Agreement, and so he requested us to remove it. So the, the current Lake Comer Agreement is when somebody comes in to develop the property before they can get their permits, they have to pay the Lake Comer Agreement to the city, and then we in turn pay Strandberg Construction the Lake Comer cost. So there's no reason why we really want to keep the thing. We did it as an agreement we made. It's common to have a Lake Comer Agreement when somebody puts in a bunch of infrastructure to make sure each parcel pays. It's a little unusual, we're deleting it, but that's out of the request of the guy that built the stuff in the first place. So I, I don't see any issue with it. If you're okay with it, we would record it with the Skagit County because it's by, it's on the parcel that they have to pay the Lake Comer Agreement. So that's the only thing we would need to do is to notify them to, well, we would, when we pass this, it will send that, and so it'll be on parcel with the Lake Comer Agreement, and then it shows the Lake Comer Agreement is canceled.
All right, questions? Okay, motions perhaps then. Direction to staff or what do you want to do with this?
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Hubick?
I move that city council authorize the mayor to terminate Lake Comer Agreement eighteen dash zero one two dash dev dash zero zero one between the city of Anacortes and RR Summit Northwest LLC.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hubick, a second by Mr. Walters to terminate the Lake Comer's agreement as presented. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, vote please.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Ms. Hubick?
Yes.
Mr. Fantini?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. No further business before the council. I'll adjourn tonight's meeting. Have a great night.